All right, good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Planning Board meeting of March fifteenth, two thousand seventeen. First item on our agenda is to welcome our new little Planning Board member, John Ryan. John's almost a lifetime member of, resident of Quincy, almost, whose pen hits and ticket is twelve.
Almost.
And I'd like to welcome the board. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any meeting. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived, by those present and are deemed knowledgeable and permissible. First item I'm going to take up is to, I think everybody's had an opportunity to review the minutes from February eighth meeting and entertain a motion to accept. So, second? Discussion, all in favor? Okay, housekeeping. The first, I'm going to read, there are a series of, I think four, the requests for continuances, so there may be some people in the audience that may not have to hang around for this meeting anyways. The first item is regarding, oh yeah, excuse me, yeah, Vice Chairman, just advising. Roll call.
Member Glenn present?
Member Callie in present.
Member Ryan present.
Member Barry present.
Member Me present. Thank you very much. First letter is a letter addressed to myself as chair regarding fifty-seven Quincy Shore Drive, Mr. Chairman Me, please accept this letter as the applicant's agreement to continue the public hearing on the above referenced project scheduled for March fifteenth, two thousand seventeen, for the next scheduled Planning Board hearing. And it's signed by Robert W. Wines. Is there a motion to continue this to April twelfth, two thousand seventeen? So, second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor? The next item is regarding forty-three to seventy-three Dennis Ryan Parkway. Please accept this letter as a request to continue the public hearing on the above referenced project scheduled for March fifteenth, two thousand seventeen, to the next scheduled Planning Board hearing. Seventeenth, uh, twelfth? Okay. Excuse me, a motion to continue it to April twelfth? Second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor? Aye. The next one is another letter that's addressed to myself. Please accept this letter as a request to continue the public hearing on the above referenced project, which is ninety-two to one hundred Sagamore Street, scheduled for March fifteenth, to the next planning board meeting scheduled. Is that another April twelfth? A motion to continue it to April twelfth? Second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. And we're going to take these out of sequence. The last item that I have for continuance is regarding one oh four, one oh six, Interveil Street, Planning Board case two oh one, seven dash oh two. Please consider this request for the above captioned hearing originally scheduled for March fifteenth to be continued until the next meeting scheduled for April twelfth, two thousand seventeen. A motion to continue that to April twelfth? So, all those in favor? Okay, now we can get to the agenda. The first public hearing is for one to thirteen Newport Avenue Site Plan Statement Planning Board Case two oh one, seven dash oh one. In accordance with the provisions of Mass General Laws, Chapter forty-eight, Section eleven, the Quincy Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, March fifteenth, at seven oh four, in the first floor boards and commissions room, Quincy City Hall, thirteen oh five Hancock Street, on the application Arista Development LLC, five twenty, Boston Providence, turnpike six nine, Noahwood, Mass, oh two oh, six two, for a site plan review under Quincy zoning ordinance Title seventeen, Section nine point five point one, site plan review, special permit under Section five point one, point one seven, parking waiver, and five point three point one three, signs. The applicant proposes the construction of a new seven-story multifamily residential building consisting of one hundred residential units with garage parking under the building to one hundred parking spaces. The applicant also proposes landscaping drainage and other site modifications. The property contains twenty-five thousand four hundred and sixty-seven plus or minus square feet of land and is located at one to thirteen Newport Avenue. The subject property is located within an industrial B zoning district in the shown in the assesses plan, six one oh five, lot one, plot eleven twenty-eight. Mr. Fleming?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thanks for clearing the agenda for us like that. What happened there with me?
Wait till you see the next on your head.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, for the record, my name is Edward Fleming. I'm here representing Arista Development LLC, joined by Scott Waymoth and John Stewart, principals. As you indicated, the property is located at one dash thirteen Newport Avenue in North Quincy, Zone Industrial B. Also joined by a number of members of the team tonight, from KFP Architects, Stephen Vine and Ken Hoyer. Steve Vine will do a presentation of the architectural plans in a moment after I provide you with a little bit of an introduction. Also joined by Jim Burke from Distel Burke Associates and Jack Gillan from Gillan and Associates, who, Jim, who did the site engineering work and Jack, who obviously did traffic engineering work. As you indicated, Mr. Chairman, there are three matters that are being requested tonight. One is site plan approval on the Title seventeen point nine point five, and also two special permits, one being for a special permit for parking under seventeen point five point one point seventeen, and signage under seventeen point five point three point thirteen. The signage, we have not provided some of the detailed information that's necessary for the signage requests that we're making. However, we anticipate that this matter may be continued to a secondary meeting, at which time we'll provide the board with detailed information regarding the sign proposal. In addition to this matter hearing before the Planning Board, this matter will also be reviewed by both the Zoning Board of Appeals and by the Conservation Commission. The site being industrially zoned isn't appropriate for residential use and is not open, and residential use is not allowed use, and as such, we're seeking a use variance from the Zoning Board of Appeals. We have not yet started that process. We will start that process after we complete the Planning Board review. It's also located in a flood plain overlay district, which requires that we file with the Conservation Commission, which Mr. Burke has done, and we will be appearing before that board at their next meeting. That's simply for flood plain review to ensure that the flood drainage plans are appropriately designed. If I may, just give a little bit of background and then I'll turn it over to the professionals for their presentations. First of all, Arista Development is a professional development company. They've done a lot of commercial development throughout the area and throughout Massachusetts, New England and beyond, and most recently completed two commercial developments right here in North Quincy, one being the new Walgreens Pharmacy on Hancock Street in North Quincy, and secondly permitted the TD Bank building directly across the street. Although the TD Bank hasn't started yet, they anticipate that construction on that matter will begin as early as this spring, which will finally complete that site. But that site was permitted and proposed by Arista Development. But in addition to the commercial development that Arista has done throughout the area and in Quincy, Arista does quite a bit of residential development as well. They just completed two projects, both, interestingly enough, are within close proximity of public transportation, one located in Attleboro and one in Mansfield. And in total, they have about two hundred units of residential housing and about four hundred units under construction as we speak today. So they're a very professional and experienced development company coming to the table today, and they have a great development team, professional architects and engineers that will make the presentation and have provided the work with the materials that you will review tonight and throughout. This site is kind of an interesting site. It's wedged, I'd say, between Newport Avenue and Arlington Street, where the hotel was proposed on the other side, and also between, and West Squonham Street. So it's wedged between those three streets. And right now, it's, for years, it's been utilized as an industrial use. I think right now it's used for a painting, a paint company. But it's industrial use at that location that's really out of its appropriate zoning. It's, all the area throughout that area is zoned differently than that industrial zoning. Directly across the street where the Adalon Development is, where it's a twelve-story building with about a hundred and twenty units, that's zoned business C. And down the street further, it turns into a more residential community, as you know. Throughout that neighborhood, single-family, two-family, three-family homes exist. So there's very little pockets of industrial. I believe, in fact, the Galvin Development, which was the last development, also was an industrial zone property, but that had essentially out of its usefulness, and that building had been vacant for years. So this building is much like that. It's not really appropriately zoned as an industrial, certainly with its close proximity to the public transportation directly across the street from the North Quincy MBTA, residential use we see as a much, much better use for that site, and hence a proposal tonight. The property is about a twenty-five thousand four hundred and sixty square foot parcel, and right now, as I indicated, it's got a deteriorated metal industrial building on the site with very little redeeming qualities, no landscaping at all, limited parking off Newport Avenue, and no aesthetic amenities at all. This site, as I indicated, is, as you know, is directly across the street from the MBTA station, but it's also in very close proximity to other amenities, things like supermarkets and restaurants and pharmacies and things that residential neighbors would find very favorable. The proposal that's before you tonight is to remove the existing metal industrial building, which, as I said, is no longer compatible with the area, introduce a brand-new, seven-story, one hundred unit multifamily residential development. We see this as a truly transit-oriented development, not within a half a mile of the T, not within three-quarters of a mile from the T, but directly across the street from the MBTA station. The building will consist of five stories of residential units, along with two levels of underground, not underground, but underbuilding parking on two levels. Both one level will be accessible from Newport Avenue and the second level will be accessible from Arlington Street, and will provide for a hundred parking spaces for the one hundred units. The breakdown of the units, which you'll hear in more detail, is about sixty-eight percent of the units are one-bedroom or studio, with sixty-four one-bedroom units and four studios. The purpose of that mix was to really focus primarily on one-bedroom and studio-type living in the close proximity to the T with the parking ratios that are going to be provided. There was a real effort to limit the number of bedrooms. There will also be thirty-two two-bedroom units, and the parking is one space per unit. So there's a number of levels of relief that we're requesting tonight, as I indicated. We're requesting site plan review, and we believe that we will satisfy in the course of this public hearing and the department's review of the applicant's plans, all the criteria of site plan review. We believe we're providing for safe vehicular and pedestrian access to and from the site, adequate access for the fire protection. We had a meeting with Chief Barron and his deputy Joe Jackson, as well as others, and discussed this very topic to ensure that there's safe access for the fire department. What they found, I think, in their favor, which is different than some buildings, some new construction that's being built, is they have access to this building on three sides, both on Newport Avenue, on West Squonham Street, and also on Arlington Street. And the West Squonham Street access is actually at a higher level, which is actually consistent with the first floor of the living level, which allows them access through their ladder trucks to gain access to the top of the building. And we had a long, nice meeting with them, and they've done, and we're providing them with additional calculations to ensure that there's adequate fire safety access. In addition to that, you'll hear from Jim Burke and through the department letters that you've received, that we've provided for adequate access to utilities and utilities at stormwater drainage on the site. The other two portions of the relief is a special permit for the parking. You've heard this argument numerous times as we are going through this development in the transit-oriented areas throughout the city, from the Quincy Center and Wallaston and North Quincy, we're fortunate to have, you know, and even further down at Quincy Adams, we're fortunate to have four MBTA stations, so there's quite a bit of transit-oriented development available in the city. This is truly a transit-oriented development in every sense of the word. And in designing this proposal, Arista looked at a number of different studies, but a lot of different information in determining whether or not this was adequately parked at one per unit. We believe that it is. And the reason we think so is because, one, we looked at the MAPC studies, which the board is very familiar with, that were done for the Wallaston redevelopment plan in this Quincy Center, which studied transit-oriented parking needs and supported the argument. In effect, and Wallaston came up with the argument of a half a space per unit initially, but certainly supported the argument for one space or less than one space per unit. But we didn't rely just on that. They also looked at other studies that have been provided and an actual counts. Arista, as I indicated, has done two proposals, one in Mansfield and one in Attleboro, both in close proximity to public transportation. And what they would testify to tonight is that only half of their parking that they're providing for those units is being used. They're finding the information, actual counts that are supporting the parking counts that were provided by the MAPC. So those studies, in addition to actual counts, is what we believe is, will satisfy the board's concern, certainly satisfy our need to provide for adequate parking. And by those counts, therefore, visitor parking will be available, not only, so they're not only parking for the units themselves, but also for visitor parking. And visitors will have access to the garage, because now with the technology, visitors that are visiting the units would simply be able to call ahead to the folks that they're visiting, and the garage doors can be opened. So what's nice about that, the garage parking, is that it's secured. It will not be utilized as transportation parking for folks that are using the T, and it will be made available and readily available for not only the residents, but also for the visitors. And we believe, in addition to that, that there will be additional public paid parking in close proximity at the MBTA station. I know that Mr. McKinnon and his group has a presentation later tonight for a great development at the MBTA station, but we know that there'll be additional parking available through that and other developments in the area. We also requested a special permit for signage, and this is where I'll end my discussion and turn it over to the team. But our signage presentation will be made in more detail at the next meeting. We're hoping that with this, with this building being located on Newport Avenue as an entrance to the city, that there would be ability to have signage on the top corner, or the top of the building, similar to discussions we had about signage even on Bridge Street, where we talked about signage that would allow visitors or folks that are traveling on Newport Avenue to be able to see signage. So we didn't provide that signage ban on the building on the initial plans. We will supplement that information at the, before the next hearing, and we'd like to talk about that in more detail at that time. But the ordinance provides that this board may grant a special permit to allow for signage in that regard. So, let me think further from me. What I'd like to do is I'd like to turn this over to Steve Devine from KFP.
Excuse me, Mr. Fleming, could I just ask you a quick question?
Yes.
Refresh my memory, the number of units on the two projects that they've done, one in Attleboro and the other one in?
There were a hundred and six. Can you just identify? Scott Waymoth for Arista Development, there was a hundred and sixty units in total, eighty on one and eighty-one on the other.
Good, thank you.
So if I could turn this over to Steve Devine from KFP Architects, Public Architects.
Thank you. Thanks for doing my presentation.
Ah, yeah.
I'll, I think he gave you a good overview of the basic project parameters, so what I'll try to do is supplement that with some more detail. So we're looking at a hundred units over seven levels. The first two levels are parking. The upper five levels are residential units consisting of one and two bedrooms predominantly with some small studio units as well, small number of studio units. The total building area is about just under a hundred and fifty thousand square feet, a hundred and forty-nine thousand on that. And the building height, as illustrated here, is just under seventy feet. The best way to give you a quick overview of the planning concept of the project is, it's a big H, so you've got one flank here, another here, and then the connecting link. The reason for that, of course, it's earned a lot by the site, but it also affords corner units, which are very nice from a planning perspective. So the ends tend to be two-bedroom units, and the middle tends to be one-bedroom units, and we have some studios, four-studio units as well. So what you're looking at here is actually the first level of residential units above the parking decks, and that affords us the ability to have some common patio areas for the residents, in addition to a residence workout exercise room and a residence meeting and property management office. But you can see the basic concept, again, is an H. And then as the building goes up, it follows that H to the upper levels, again, the flank, two flanks, and then there's the connecting piece. And at the upper levels, these are handicap units and studios and things like that, so all over the middle. And the building is serviced by two elevators and two stairways, but only. So back to, from the ground up, so to speak. The first level is parking, and it's access off of Newport Ave, so you come in and there's two flanks of parking. Again, the elevator core stairs in the middle, another stairway here, and there's fifty spaces per a level, so we've got two levels. Again, this entrance is from Newport Avenue. The next level up is from Arlington Street. The levels do not connect with the cars, there's no interconnecting ramp, so you, people coming in from Newport Ave, they go to the first level of parking, people going to the second level of parking, we come up on the street. In addition to the parking, the garages, we have ancillary spaces like trash, maintenance rooms, some bike storage. We anticipate that the tenants would have some bikes and will utilize those. We also have some storage spaces and utility rooms and electric rooms and the usual things that would accompany a building like this. So again, first two levels, parking, fifty spaces each level, a hundred spaces total, and we've got the required handicap parking figured into that as well. Drilling down a little bit on the types of units, as Ed mentioned, we have sixty-four one-bedroom units, thirty-two two-bedroom, two of the two-bedroom units are planned for handicap, and three of the one-bedroom are planned for handicap. The two-bedroom apartments range from nine hundred and twenty-one square feet to about nine hundred and ninety-eight, so just under a thousand square feet, the two-bedroom units. And the one-bedroom units range from about seven hundred and twenty square feet to eight hundred and seventy-two, so I would imagine the upper level range on those are probably the handicap units. In the studios, there are four studios, four hundred and seventy square feet to four hundred and forty square feet. I have plans of each and every level here, and if anybody would like to take a closer examination of those, they're all here, but they're pretty typical. We also have some unit plans, blowups of how the units lay out, although you can tell from these as well. At the roof, we anticipate with the number of occupants in the building that we would like to have a roof deck, of course you're going to have some nice views up there. So the elevators and stairways come to the roof, and there's a nice roof deck planned on the side of the building at the front. There will also be some mechanical equipment on the roof as well. Moving over to the elevations, what we have, when you do the H, it affords you some nice abilities to have, to break the scale and amassing of the building up in a way that it's very residential in its feel. And we also introduce materials to help break that scale down even further. So it doesn't look like an office building, it looks more like what you would expect a residential building to look like with, you know, residential scale windows, and in this case, we have what we call Juliet balconies. So there's no walkout balconies, per se. They're, you see these popping up in Boston, I was not back last year, Fenway Park, I was looking over the Green Monster, there's a big new building they just built that has exactly this kind of concept where instead of a walkout balcony, you'll have doors that open up and there's a glass railing out there. So it gives the residents a good feel toward, to the outside without building, you know, a balcony necessarily. So that's, that's becoming something that's commonly done. So what you have here is you've got two flanks, and then we've got an entrance statement at the middle of the building where there'll be some signage with the building name, the building address, and this is the main entrance along West Quonham Street. And for those of you who are familiar with that street, there's a little bit of a slope across the front of that building. So what we've done is to introduce some step terraces to help address that in a nice way with some planted areas and such like that, so it makes for a very nice statement. Along the backside, or the other side, or I should say the Newport Avenue side, down at the bottom where the parking garage is, rather than have like a big concrete wall, we've tried to tastefully introduce some scale elements there as well with some screening to let some ventilation into the garage, but also provide for some security, and we've designed a screen in a way that, you know, we may get some vines or some landscape features, you know, on those. So that's what is being represented here. We tried to do that in a nice decorative architectural manner so it doesn't look bland and has a nice feature to it. The other landscape element you see in the courtyard areas, we've introduced some trees and such like that, so it feels like a nice space where the residents would want to spend some time. These are the other two elevations. Again, you can see the flanks and then the space in the middle and the trees and such like that, and you also see the entrance to the garage. The materials, we're using a red brick, face brick, and like a hottie plank, two-tone with a grayish color and a light yellow. Again, these are all devices to break a larger building down into a nice residential scale feeling. And then there's a, there's a van across at the top of the garage. So if you look at this, it doesn't really say, hey, I'm a big parking garage here with a hundred cars in it, so we try to approach that in a way that breaks it down decoratively and nicely, artificially. And at the top, it has a nice cornice that'll give you a nice shadow line. These also have subtle cornices on them, all designed to break down scale and make it feel very residential and not some huge building that's out of place. So all these things were carefully thought through in a way to break the scale down in a nice sensible way, the amassing, the materials and such like that. We have some samples of the materials. It's the actual samples, but what we did is we took some pictures and we mounted them on board here. So the brick, I had to do this yesterday inside the office because it was snowing, under a lamp, but we actually have the brick samples, and then these are the materials with the siding would be as proposed. And then these are the materials with the siding would be as proposed. And then there's some mortar color that would also be used on that. So I think, I was told not to spend any more than 10 minutes. My time is up. If you have any questions, look forward to those.
I'd love to also ask Mr. Burke to present the engineering from the house.
Based on all of that, I'll have very little to say.
Jim, introduce yourself.
Oh, yeah, we'll do. Jim Burke with DeSalle Burke and Associates with offices here in Quincy. We're the civil site engineer for 113 Newport Ave. And you have, you know, 25,000 private square foot lot that has an existing multi-story metal wood frame structure that's seen better times. Essentially, entire site's paved. Most of the utilities come out to Arlington, New Water, fire protection, the sewer, all come out to Arlington. The electrical's overhead along Newport and it's fed from that direction. The grades are pretty flat for this particular site. It is located in a flood plain. Flood plain in this area is 11. The entire sites located within that flood plain are what we're proposing. As you recently saw, let's stop on this page here, is a building that basically takes up the lot lines to, fits into the lot. We're going to be accessing the utilities, same thing, water, brand-new water, brand-new sewer, pretty much replacing the existing services with new services and using what we're currently proposing, the existing utilities. We are aware of the improvements proposed for Arlington Street. We're prepared to work with the hotel and with those improvements for those particular utilities as well. The electricals continue to come off of Newport Ave. There's electrical rooms over on this location here. There is no existing stormwater controls on the site right now. Records show there's a catch basin about this location inside the building. Couldn't find it, but certainly we'll have to cap off that utilities plus all the other existing ones. But for all intents and purposes, everything just kind of runs off uncontrolled and no quality control whatsoever. What we're proposing is capturing the entire roof so there's no real water quality issues associated with the roof runoff. And we've got two systems, 240 structure cul-de-sac chambers. So you have a four-by-10 structure here and a four-by-10 structure in this location, and all the roof runoff will be collected and conveyed to that. The soils are, we did some test borings, soils can be more or less be described as silty gravel. We use a hydrologic B soil to generate the existing conditions runoff, but it almost doesn't matter because everything's paved from what we're suggesting to propose. So what we're doing with this, it certainly buffers all the storm events that we need to do and replenishes the brown as well. There's also oil water separator for the underground garage. And that's it about for utilities. KFP mentioned the, what we're doing in front along East One, oh, sorry, West One with the garage, the retaining wall, and we kind of stepped up. So this whole area will now, right now, it's, it drops down about 14 feet. Head up here, then it drops 14 feet. Real collection area for trash and debris, tires, columns, your name that's down there. So we're actually, now we'll have a sidewalk that actually will kind of rise up and creep the building in that location. So that depression will be eliminated when this develops. So if you have any questions, I'd like to answer.
Thank you, Jim.
Well, good.
So the only additional items that I'd like to just touch on. First of all, I apologize for not introducing Mark Kopchel. Mark Kopchel was hired as a landscape, professional landscape architect, who's prepared the plans that are before you tonight as well. And Jack Gillen is here as well as Mark to answer any questions. We won't have them make any formal presentations tonight, but they've prepared all the information that's been provided to the board and to the departments. A couple of things I just wanted to highlight and just kind of follow up with Steve on. Two benefits to this is that because these sites are, you know, sites that, you know, like an industrial site as such, what has been created here is the structured play area, I'd call it, or courtyard, much like Zero Penn Street did with their raised platform where they provided amenities for the tenants. So in that sense, that H shape that's been designed by KFP is allowed for the creation of outside space where there's no space provided otherwise. And in addition to that, there's an improvement along West Guam Street, as Steve talked about the terracing effect that will be created. What that does now, as you, if you were to walk by the building today, you'd notice that from West Guam Street to the building, there's a gap that actually you'd fall down about 12 feet or so, or even more. That gap is now being filled in. That land area will be filled, and a terraced green space will be created in front of the building, which actually provides certainly an aesthetic feature for this building, but also an opportunity to do some landscaping that will be maintained by Arista as part of the ownership of this building. I just wanted to highlight those two points. And then Mr. Kopchel and Mr. Gillen are here to answer any questions at the board. So Ben.
Question from Board members. You know, please, one more.
Mr. Jim. Thanks, Attorney Fleming. I'm sorry, just the beginning of your remarks earlier about the current ownership and the type of industry that had been conducted there for these weeks.
I believe it's a paint.
It was paint operation.
It was, yeah. It's a paint operation.
C R C, right?
Industrial paint operation.
And roughly how long have they been out of business or?
Yeah, they're actually, I think they're operating, they're operating from the facility as we speak.
Oh, okay. So I guess my question, so I'm assuming there's a cement pad there currently or will be there when you demolish? And I guess my question about any kind of contamination and if that's an issue.
That's a great question. And yes, there was contamination on the site that was evaluated and studied. The contamination can be addressed appropriately. There's no groundwater contamination. It's soil contamination that can be, as part of the excavation, will be removed from the site and managed. But nothing, nothing serious in nature that was needed requirement of activated activities and use limitation or aid or anything like that.
Okay, great. Well, it's good to see this area being developed. A long time telling. Thanks.
I'm sorry. I'll preface my comment. Having grown up in Montclair, I've been waiting for this building to get torn down my entire life. But I do have some questions that I just want to get my head around, especially around parking and amassing. So let's start with the parking first. So you mentioned some studies, and I think that what we do have there is we have two apartment complexes across the street and one just a little bit down West Guam Street. Do we have any idea about how many units are in those buildings and how many cars they have, so that we can kind of compare apples to apples? And maybe you don't have a map.
I believe that, and that's something I can certainly provide the board with. In fact, you raise a great point because that was a point that we discussed actually as we were speaking with other officials from the city, including the mayor and Mr. Patsy's, about the goal of trying to obtain some real live numbers. The numbers that I did have available were the numbers from Ataboo and Mansfield and relative to the parking demands that they have in close proximity to public transportation. I believe that Avalon has 120 units in their building. I'm not positive with that, but I'm, and I've tried, I tried to reach out to Avalon, who I had represented before on a small proposal, not the one on Quark Street, the across the street. And unfortunately, I wasn't able to gather that information, but I'll certainly reach out, do so. We did however have conversations, interestingly enough, with folks that live at the Montclair condominium complex, who indicated that even in a condominium complex, the demand on parking was not what they expected and that much, and that some of their parking lot is available for visitors and not utilized. So we can certainly obtain that information.
Great. Another question I had.
Go ahead.
You made a point that I think, you know, resonates with this board. This is indeed a gateway to our city, and it's very important that we, this board especially is not surprised by what this building looks like when it goes up. And so, you know, these renderings are helpful, but I think it would be very helpful to understand what this building is going to look like when you're coming down, or should I say up Newport Ave? You come over the Napaunt Bridge, you're on Newport Ave. What are we seeing? Same from the other direction. I just want to make sure, you know, from a fair distance away, I want to make sure how this change of the landscape and the feel of going up and down that corridor is, you know, very much known to us before voting.
Is that something, Steve, is that something that we can provide, kind of visuals from a distance so that the board has a better?
We have to create those.
Okay.
We don't have something, you know, per se.
But that can be created. Yeah, we could. Okay, great.
I mean, I think the only advantage that probably is not super important, given there's going to be a hotel next to it, is coming down West Guam Street, but all other visual would be, would be helpful to me. As far as the parking that lets out onto Newport, forgive me if I missed it in the plans, but will it be a forced right turn on Newport? I can imagine it could be disruptive if people were taking lefts out of the parking garage.
Right now, there aren't any specific turning restrictions. I anticipate that as we continue going through the review, that there may be recommendations from the department that there be restrictions on turning, whether it be left turn ins and outs. We'll talk about that. But right now, we're not proposing any restriction. But if the board is concerned about it, certainly if the department, as they go through the review, is concerned about it, we'll implement those kind of restrictions.
I mean, I know that now, the current news, I don't think you have any sort of heavy traffic coming out of that kickboxing. I don't even know if that's what it is anymore.
Yeah.
Sorry.
You were right, Jim, or whatever.
But, you know, I could just see that it would be something that would be helpful just to alleviate any traffic concern.
And we could certainly have Mr. Gillen look at that in more detail now that you've raised that concern. I know, I'm sure that Mr. Gillen has the actual counts of what he anticipates leaving that garage at certain hours of the day, and certainly maybe that restriction can be implemented even on a, during the busy, specific busy hours, you know, in the morning, on the afternoon, in terms of that nature.
And then I think, I think my final comment for now, and again, sorry for rapid firing here, but I appreciate the level of detail in the landscaping plan along West Guam. So I noticed in the, in the plans that were given, there's a lot of attention to the facade facing West Guam, and I know that there's also going to be some trees up on the, on the shared patio area. But I just would like to see some greater detail given landscaping-wise to the other three facades. Given it's going to be seven stories, I feel like that's a lot of, you know, brick and concrete and whatever other, you know, material that's being used, but just the more green the better. I mean, especially if we're going to have a hotel next door, it'd be great if there was something kind of signaling that this is residential, that's where people call their home, and I think would just help to get back to the point that I made about making that Newport corridor just a little bit prettier. So.
Any other questions in the board members?
Okay, I have a couple. What's the, how high is this building? I know it's seven stories, but.
69 foot 11.
From what point?
Average grade.
Average grade being off of West Guam or?
We want to keep it under a high-rise classification.
Okay. You answered my question. Thank you.
Yeah, so it actually takes, so it takes a grade from all around the building.
Yeah, and the definition is.
And that's what we talked, and that was, that's a great point though, because that's exactly the point that we talked to the fire department about. And they, we wanted, and in fact, Mr. Duta actually raised that with us and asked us to follow up with the fire department because of building code concerns really that focus primarily on fire safety and fire protection. And I think, I can't speak for the chief, and I'm sure that he'll issue a letter if necessary, but it seemed as though from our meeting that they seemed reasonably satisfied that from West Guam Street that they would have adequate access for fire protection all the way to the roof.
And the other question is a follow-up to remember Glenn's question. Is there a 21 E on this?
Yes.
Yes.
And we could certainly provide that to the board. If there's petroleums and into that nature, but mostly soil related that were captured in the soil in the review.
Yeah, I'd like to see that, the health permission, the health department, these points.
Sure. Okay, I don't have any, the board members still have another question? Okay, this is a public hearing. I would ask anyone who wishes to speak to come forward, identify themselves, and if there are some shy people in the audience, we also have sheets on the windowsill over here that you can sign. So anybody would like to speak on this project?
I would.
Okay. Identify yourself, Jim.
John Rutherford, 62 Grand Mall Road. Basically, a couple of questions, and then I got some documents. They're not in color, but I circled the parts that would have been color. You can all pass them around and look at them. But looking through the zoning code, first of all, it explains what you can do in business C, and it has these extra sort of rules that, you know, 500 square feet, 100 square feet for minimum green space. But I'm trying to find a passage somewhere in the zoning code or even that says anywhere, if you can even develop anything in an industrial zone. And if you can, what are your limitations? Now, I just listened to him say 150,000 square feet, that was the building.
149,000.
149,000, so it's about 25,000 square foot lot. That's an easy math problem, okay? 6.0 F A R. And then dwelling space per unit, very easy too, because it's 100 units, just got to move a decimal point over a couple, about 254 square feet per dwelling unit, okay? So our minimum business C zoning code says you can do 500. They're asking for 254. The minimum business C zoning code says 3.5 F A R. They're doing 6. Now, I think those are crazy, but, you know, attorney, all the attorneys will come up here and say, we're within the zoning code. They use our own zoning code against us. Now, I'm not even sure what the zoning code is when you do, do in industry, okay? But just to let you see, they are in a flood zone, okay? Their whole building is in a flood zone. And what I printed out was the three different maps. And this is the 2012 map of that area, okay? And if you look, Montclair, that area, that was one area that took a big hit. And the interesting thing is, you'll see that's how it looked in 2012. Well, 2014 came out, everyone was like, oh, I'm in a flood zone, I'm in a flood zone. Well, they made a new map in 2017, they put new people in here. Ironically, this parcel is one of the few parcels that when the new map came out, you're worse off in 2017 than you were off in 2014. There aren't many that are in there. But Montclair has taken a tremendous hit on flooding, okay? This is in a flood zone. This is going to jeopardize the North Quincy project. I mean, I kind of think, oh, this is what I was looking for before, F A R. Okay, I just drew up this cheap diagram, okay? We shouldn't be developing in a flood zone, shouldn't be giving them any special permits. I'm hoping, I was at the zoning meeting last time, three motions to deny. I was proud of my zoning board, okay? I wasn't proud of my planning board the last meeting, okay? You can continue this, and you can go on to the, you know, there's no way this could be approved tonight because there's so many more documents that they need to give us and stuff, but this, I don't understand this. This doesn't make any sense. This is not only a flood zone, but, am I correct, isn't that where Mr. Wires used to be? Okay, so for anyone that's interested in this area, we all know that's where Mr. Wires used to be, okay? So it's definitely not someplace we should be developing at all. I mean, there needs to be a master plan on what we're doing up in North Quincy. And, I mean, I'm actually, you know, I don't know why I'm the person that has to keep standing up, meeting after meeting after meeting, and standing up for the taxpayers and the people and the future of a good Quincy. But I'm going to continue to do it, and I'm not going to stop. And I don't know what to say. I'm actually appalled at this thing. I am, I want you to please note, I know things aren't always noted, but I am strongly opposed to this project, okay? You hit it right on the head, Mr. Barry. Green space. Green space, that would be a nice place for the city to eminent domain. That building has been for sale forever. I drove by that building so many times. Anyone has the right to buy property. Anyone has the right to hire Mr. Burke or Mr. Fleming to represent them. Anyone has the right to ask the planning board for a special permit. But you don't have to grant a special permit to anyone who comes up here and asks you. And it doesn't matter if you say no or if you say yes to a bad project again. I really don't know. This is a really bad project. Unfortunately, I have to speak again because there's another bad project that's coming up later, so I'll stop talking. Thank you.
Any questions? Anyone else wants to speak? Come on up. Sir?
Phil's answer came out through Circle Quincy. My only concern at this point is that one access point off of, I think Swan, am I correct? Not the Arlington, but Swan, correct? I think you're going to have to impose that to be a forced right turn only because it's just too close to the Newport-Swan intersection. And I mean, I don't know how you get people to actually do it, but I'm just, I can see people coming up from Walgreens and banging a left into the garage. It's not that tough to do a lap around the block. I lived in downtown Boston, I had to do that. There's only one way in and it's just, it's just too darn close. They can't move it back because of the way that site is set up and everything else. And if you're going to approve it, you've got to have a restriction on that garage access. But Arlington, no big deal, that's a side street. Thank you.
Thank you.
For the clarification, the entrance on Swan Street has a pedestrian, it's not a vehicle?
That's correct, only pedestrian. If a vehicular access is on Newport Ave and.
I'm sorry, I missed your report.
Yep, we understand, thank you.
Anyone else wishes to speak? Sir?
Good evening, members of the planning board. I would like to speak on behalf of Arista Development. My name's Kevin Worley. I've lived in the city my entire life. Much like with our vice chair, Barry, I used to walk by the old Hancock Paint Building and it was a huddle of activity one time. But now it is, to your point, dilapidated, needs to be updated. A couple of interesting questions were asked earlier. I think in Attorney Fleming's opening remarks, one of the things I believe he did not mention is that Arista Development has been a good neighbor to the city of Quincy. He talked about Vice Chair Barry being the gateway to the city. Some of the things that Arista has already done were just lightly mentioned. But what was not brought to the table was the fact that Arista worked with the city to help with the traffic areas and widening of East Guam Street, widening of Hancock Street and the turning around of the turn lanes on both sides, which helped ease some of the existing traffic issues that were there. I think it's a great plan. I'm not sure where some of the previous folks who have come up and spoken before you tonight in the public comments, what their goals were or what their perspective was. But I believe when we can have development that comes into an area of the city, especially in the north end of the city, where everything's being focused on Quincy Center and the redevelopment efforts that are going on down here, when you have an individual or a company that wants to come to town and work with the city, help problems with the state, as well as, for lack of a better description, beautify the north end of the city, I think that's a great project and I hope that you all look favorably upon it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Worley. Anyone else wishing to speak? During last time, anyone wishing to speak? Again, I remind the public that garage sheets on the side over by the windowsill. Mr. Stevens?
Yep, Mr. Chairman, planning board members. We did receive a call this afternoon from Counselor Ian Kane, who is where this project is proposed for. He sends his regrets. He wanted to attend, but another matter came up. He is following this project and expects to be at a future planning board meeting to share his thoughts.
And for the record, Counselor Kane actually held a neighborhood meeting as well. So there was a neighborhood meeting held and a number of folks in the community attended.
So I would entertain a motion to continue this to the lucky April 12th meeting. So second discussion, all those in favor?
Hi.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I did see that there were some people that came in after I made the announcement. I don't want to hold you here if you're here for an item that has been put out. We've continued 57 Quincy short drive to April the 12th. We've continued 43 to 73, Dennis and Hawkway to April 12th. We've continued 92 to 100 Saginaw Street to April 12th. And we've continued 104 to 106, O'Dale, to April 12th. I know the young ladies that came in, I don't know if any of those affected them. I tried.